Ladies and gentlemen, let me open and tell you how much I appreciate all of you here tonight. But we, I want to tell you that we are very honored to have a very special group of individuals who have come to visit Pearland. And I think it's important that you have a chance to meet them and know a little bit about them. And I'll ask our city manager, Mr. Peterson, if he will lead the introduction of these fine individuals.
We've got a group that came in from York. And they are looking for some kind of help and studying and learning. They're very interested in how we can assist them. We encourage them to ask questions. They've already been this morning to the Pearland.
To our new nature center, then over to J-HAC, Keep Pearland Beautiful. And then we're very proud that they visited Novak Community School District. Dr. Kellid, his team hosted a lunch there, and then they went to Turner High School. So this group is very enthusiastic, very bright. This whole idea, I've been associated with for like 10 or 15 years probably, and always been impressed with the caliber of professionals in government in Japan. And so we're honored that you selected Pearland to come this year. We hope it's many, many more. Hope this is the start of a great relationship. Please continue to lean on us and ask us any questions that we can. And I'd like them to, if you all indulge us, just introduce themselves and from where they're from, and then we'll get on with the meeting after that. So, thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm Takahiro Ando, Deputy Executive Director of Japan Local Government Center. And I'm originally from Ministry of Internal Affairs, which is in charge of local governance in Japan. And thank you for hosting us in Pearland City. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Yoshimi Yanae. So I'm Assistant Director of the Japan Local Government Center. So I'm originally from the Tokyo Metro Police Department. So I'm very glad to visit your beautiful country. Thank you very much.
My name is Mihotachi, and I'm Assistant Director of GLGC, and I'm from Ibuki Prefecture. Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mami Ohashi. I'm Assistant Director of Japan Local Government Center. Originally, I came from the Ministry of Internal Affairs and Communications. Thank you very much for today.
Hi, good evening. I'm Tomoko Fujiwara, and I'm Assistant Director of Japan Local Government Center. And I'm originally from Nakano Prefecture, and I really appreciate that I can attend this meeting. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kokoro Aima. I'm Assistant Director of Japan Local Government Center, and I'm from Kobe City. Thank you for this opportunity.
I'm Akisugawa. I'm from the Japan Local Government Center. I'm originally from Yamagata Prefecture. Thank you for inviting this meeting. Thank you.
And again, Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing the staff this opportunity. I think it's a great way that we can show off some of the things that we're proud of in Pearland. And so it gives the staff a chance to exhibit some of the hospitality that I experienced when I was in Japan several years ago. And so we're very proud that they're here. And again, hope you have a great visit, and we hope you'll come back and visit us very soon. So thank you very much, sir.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. Our city council meeting will start in just a few moments, six thirty. So we'll have a few moments to recline and speculate. I think it's wonderful that we have this fine delegation of Japanese that are here tonight, because it's an opportunity for them to find out a little bit more about Pearland and Texas and what goes on in this part of the country. And it gives us an opportunity to meet some fine young individuals from Japan and the service of that nation. I don't know that, Clay, are you going to give a video on some of the things you all accomplished? Okay. But we do have a video of the actions that they have taken within the city. And we might just shut down part of this after all. And how long is the video?
Hello?
No video tonight.
Okay, okay. We have about five minutes till we start a council meeting.
Moving in our agenda to item number five, which is a public hearing. It's a little different than we... The agenda does usually have a position for a public hearing, and tonight we have one. And let me open that and ask the staff to introduce the item of our discussion and the staff review.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hardy, yes. So tonight we have a public hearing required for a voluntary annexation, and Mr. Hardy will just give us a little background of the map for that.
Thank you, Clay. Mayor and Council, this is a first hearing of the voluntary annexation of about a little over 100 acres of land in three different sections, two of which are directly involved with the pending construction of our surface water plant in the southwest area of the ETJ. Some of that land is owned by the city, and there's about 7.2 acres that involves the Gulf Coast Water Authority, the canal, if you will. And this map shows the depiction of those areas. We believe that those areas are important to be within the city limits for a number of reasons. One of the important ones is that it gives us some extension as far as our local boundaries in ways that promote opportunities for contiguity should we decide to annex or have the opportunity to annex land surrounding this piece that we want to bring into the city at this time. So the city has self-petitioned for its own parcels, and we also have a petition from the Gulf Coast Water Authority to bring the canal into the city limits as well. So in total, this involves about 100 acres of land as the map shows. The third annexation area involves a very small portion of private residential property associated with 2535 Stevenson Road. This particular property owner is interested in obtaining access to water utilities, and in order to do so, he has agreed to become voluntarily annexed into the city limits for the portion of his property that are currently located in the ETJ. And as the slide shows, he has somewhat of a split, if you will, because the boundary of the city cuts across his property in a way that prevents him from having access to our utilities. So this is a good opportunity to demonstrate the importance of being in the city limits. So with that said, we have a process that should take place over the next couple of months that will, upon council approval, bring these areas into the city limits in accordance with the property owner's request. With that said, I believe that that covers the most important aspects of this public hearing, and pass back the balance to council. Thank you.
Okay. That information on the record. Let us then move to the next item on our agenda, item seven, which is services and comments. Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any member of the audience who'd like to speak out of for or against these proposed annexations? The second time, any member of the audience who'd like to speak out of for or against these proposed annexations? Third and final time, any member of the audience who'd like to speak out of for or against these proposed annexations? No contest, sir.
Okay, moving in our agenda, item number eight, which is an opportunity for the city council and the staff to discuss the issues that we have presented at this point. And starting with our city council, Councilmember Carbone.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the annexation makes sense. I appreciate all the info in the packet, including the notifications that went out to all the school districts this time. So, thank you.
Councilmember Perez.
No comment, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Hernandez.
Have no comment, Mayor.
Councilmember Little.
No comment.
And Councilmember Owens.
No comment.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to staff discussion.
Mayor, our comments are complete.
Does that complete your discussion at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Moving further into our agenda, which is item number nine, which gives us the opportunity to adjourn this public hearing, which I so shall do. Moving to item number 10 on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. And we have a tradition of always getting, having Tony start this off, so Councilmember Carbone, would you do that? And are there any items to be removed other than items F and I? Items F and I, okay.
F and I. Thank you, Mayor.
Consent agenda, except those two. Thank you.
Conservation possible action, approval of consent agenda, items A through K, with the exception of F and I, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the second. Councilmember Madam Secretary, I think we have a motion on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Moving to item number I.
F. I think F was the first in order, Mayor.
F was the first one. Council, okay.
Mayor, before we start discussion on this, I'd just like to make it, to disclose that the owner of Pearland Animal Hospital is a client of mine. I don't think that presents a conflict, but I thought I'd make it, disclose it.
Conservation possible action resolution R 2019-139, so moved.
Second.
139, we have motion second on the floor. Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This and I, we are in need at our animal services shelter professional expertise for care of the animals, evaluation. And so we went out and solicited proposals. Pearland Animal Hospital is recommended. They are also the incumbent firm, so they performed well, and ask for your positive consideration.
Council on the discussion or a comment on this item?
I had a quick question. I know when we took a tour of the Friendswood facility, they, I believe, mentioned that they have veterinary services donated. Is that something that we have ever looked into doing?
I don't recall that. I mean, I'd be surprised. You know, they're probably, maybe this gets discounted because there's, you know, some other benefits they accrue by visibility and so forth. But we put this out for proposals. Somebody could have bid back zero if they wanted to donate, and that's how, you know, that could have been considered, but they didn't.
Okay. So I guess that's something that we can discuss, I guess, as we move forward with the new facility and things like that.
In terms of what?
Well, Jimmy, as we could potentially look at, if we get the new facility, we could, I guess, have more of a comprehensive look at maybe some areas where maybe we could get somebody to donate, you know?
Again, I mean, I don't know, I mean, the scale of this, I don't know how somebody would be able to do that, but when we put this out for proposals, they could say, "I'll do this for no fee," and that's how they could respond and donate it. So I guess, in a way, we've given them that option this time, and this is what we got.
Well, good. Now it's on public record that people can donate their veterinary services.
I mean, yeah. Anybody can donate a road construction or anything they want to, if they...
Yeah, I've got a question on it, Mayor. And one thing, I guess they were the only ones that bid on this. Is that correct? Okay. One question that I have, the trip charge. Is that when they come out to the adoption center and it's a $90 charge out there, and if they see one of the dogs or cats or whatever's there, it's additional 30 for the exam? So it's $120 every time they come out? Is that correct?
No, sir, that's not correct. Actually, they're required to come out three times a week to provide services at the facility. If there's a special call where they have to come out and treat an animal, maybe that has been injured, et cetera, then yes, there's a trip charge associated with that and the additional fees in addition to that. So that's really just a trip charge in case they have to come out in an emergency situation or we call them for whatever purpose.
Okay, so you're saying this includes three on-site visits a week?
That's correct.
With animals?
Yes, sir.
That's not just one animal could be visited?
No. Also included in that is we're also purchasing vaccines for them, and they'll administer the vaccines as required by law.
Okay. All right, this is what I thought it was, the way it was written up, I thought it was that every time they came out, it was going to be a minimum of $120 charge on there. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'd just like to add, visa-type contracts, we'd like to see more of. Chris Scheffler and the Pearland Animal Hospital has been owned by a few other members that have always been extremely generous to the community. I happen to know that he does, or at least he's explained to me that he actually does not make money on this contract. I'm sure that he doesn't want to lose money, but he's not, he's doing this for the better of the community. That's what he's expressing to me personally. Not only...
Which is a public hearing, it's a little different than we, the agenda does usually have a position for a public hearing and tonight we have one. And let me open that and ask the staff to introduce the, introduce the item of our discussion and the staff review.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy, yes. So tonight we have a public hearing required for a voluntary annexation and Mr. Hardy will just give us a little background of the map for that.
Thank you Clay, Mayor Council, this is a first hearing of the voluntary annexation of about a little over 100 acres of land in three different sections, two of which are directly involved with the pending construction of our surface water plant in the southwest area of the ETJ. Some of that land is owned by the city and there's about 7.2 acres that involves the Gulf Coast Water Authority, the canal if you will, and this map shows the depiction of those areas. We believe that those areas are important to be within the city limits for a number of reasons. One of the important ones is that it gives us some extension as far as our local boundaries in ways that promote opportunities for contiguity should we decide to annex or have the opportunity to annex land surrounding this piece that we want to bring into the city at this time. So the city has self petition for its own parcels and we also have a petition from the Gulf Coast Water Authority to bring the canal into the city limits as well. So in total this involves about 100 acres of land as the map shows. The third annexation area involves a very small portion of private residential property associated with 2535 Stevenson Road. This particular property owner is interested in obtaining access to water utilities and in order to do so, he has agreed to become voluntarily annexed into the city limits for the portion of his property that are currently located in the ETJ. And as the slide shows, he has somewhat of a split if you will because the boundary of the city cuts across his property in a way that prevents him from having access to our utilities. So this is a good opportunity to demonstrate the importance of being in the city limits. So with that said, we have a process that should take place over the next couple of months that will upon council approval, bring these areas into the city limits in accordance with the property owner's request. With that said, I believe that that covers the most important aspects of this public hearing and pass back the balance to council. Thank you.
Okay. That information on the record. Let us then move to the next item on our agenda, item seven, which is Services and Economy, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you Mayor. Is there any member of the audience who'd like to speak out of for or against these proposed annexations? For the second time, any member of the audience who'd like to speak out of for or against these proposed annexation? Third and final time, any member of the audience who'd like to speak out of for or against these proposed annexations? No contest, Mayor.
Okay, moving in our agenda, item number eight, which is an opportunity for the city council and the staff to discuss the issues that we have presented at this point. And starting with our city council, Councilmember Carbone.
Thank you Mayor. I think the annexation makes sense. I appreciate all the info in the packet, including the notifications that went out to all the school districts this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Perez.
Uh, no comment Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Hernandez.
Have no comment Mayor.
Councilmember Little.
No comment.
And Councilmember Owens.
No comment.
Okay, moving in our agenda to staff discussion.
Mayor, our comments are complete.
Does that complete your discussion at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Moving further into our agenda, which is item number nine, which gives us the opportunity to adjourn this public hearing, which I so shall do. Moving to item number 10 on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. And we have a tradition of always getting, having Tony start this off, so Councilmember Carbone, would you do that? And are there any items to be removed other than items F and I? Items F and I, okay?
F and I. Thank you Mayor.
Consent agenda except those two, thank you.
Conservation possible action, approval of consent agenda items A through K, with the exception of F and I, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Madam Secretary, I think we have.
Councilmember Carbone, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero.
Moving to item number I.
Uh, F, I think F was the first in order Mayor.
F was the first one. Awesome, okay.
Mayor, before we start discussion on this, I'd just like to make it, to disclose that the owner of Pearland Animal Hospital is a client of mine. I don't think that presents a conflict, but I thought I'd make it, disclose it.
Conservation possible action resolution R 2019-139, so moved.
Second.
139, we have motion second on the floor. Secretary.
Thank you Mayor and Council. This is an item we are in need at our animal services shelter professional expertise for care of the animals, evaluation, and so we went out and solicited proposals. Pearland Animal House Hospital is recommended. They are also the incumbent firm, so they performed well and asked for your positive consideration.
Council on the discussion or a comment on this item?
I had a quick question. I know when we took a tour of the Friendswood facility, they, I believe, mentioned that they have veterinary services donated. Is that something that we have ever looked into doing?
I don't recall that. I mean, I'd be surprised, you know, there probably is, maybe this is, gets discounted because there's, you know, some other benefits they accrue by visibility and so forth, but we put this out for proposals, somebody could have bid back zero if they wanted to donate and that's how, you know, that could have been considered, but they didn't.
Okay. So I guess that's something that we can discuss, I guess, as we move forward with the new facility and things like that.
In terms of what?
Well, Jimmy, as we could potentially look at, if we get the new facility, we could, I guess, have more of a comprehensive look at maybe some areas where maybe we could get somebody to donate, you know?
Again, I mean, I don't know, I mean, the scale of this, I don't know how somebody would be able to do that, but when we put this off for proposals, they could say, I'll do this for no fee and that's how they could respond and donate it. So I guess, in a way, we've given them that option this time and this is what we got.
Well, good, now it's on public record that people can donate their veterinary services.
I mean, yeah, anybody can donate a road construction or anything they want to if they.
Yeah, I've got a question on it Mayor. And one thing, I guess they were the only ones that bid on this? Is that correct? Okay. One question that I have, the trip charge, is that when they come out to the adoption center and it's a $90 charge out there and if they see one of the dogs or cats or whatever's there, it's additional 30 for the exam? So it's $120 every time they come out, is that correct?
No sir, that's not correct. Actually, they're required to come out three times a week to provide services at the facility. If there's a special call where they have to come out and treat an animal maybe that has been injured, et cetera, then yes, there's a trip charge associated with that and the additional fees in addition to that. So that's really just a trip charge in case they have to come out in an emergency situation or we call them for whatever purpose.
Okay, so you're saying this includes three on-site visits a week?
That's correct.
With animals?
Yes.
That's not, not just one animal could be visited?
No, also included in that is we're also purchasing vaccines for them and they'll administer the vaccines as required by law.
Okay. All right, this is what I thought it was, the way it was written up, I thought it was that every time they came out, it was going to be a minimum of a $120 charge on there. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'd just like to add, visa type contracts, we'd like to see more of. Chris Scheffler and the Pearland Animal Hospital has been owned by a few other members that have always been extremely generous to the community. I happen to know that he does, or at least he's explained to me that he actually does not make money on this, this contract. I'm sure that he doesn't want to lose money, but he's not, he's doing this for the better of the community. That's what he's expressing to me personally. Not only is it good to see these kind of contracts go to members of our community that are very generous, but also local businesses that are very generous. So hopefully we can see more of these in the future.
Counsel, any further comments? I believe we've got a motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number I.
Thank you Mayor, conservation possible action resolution R 2019-81, so moved.
Second.
Motion of the second, we're discussing, staff report.
Thanks sir, the city completed the extension of Fight Road between McLean and Veterans. As part of that construction project, we hired professional services, construction management, and inspection with PTP. The project went longer than anticipated was in the contract documents and the original award, and so to recognize that we've, we owe them this amount of extra money for the time that they incurred while they were there. This contract is separate from the construction contract itself and as part of that is described in the write-up, the city will be entitled to, you know, some compensation from the original contractor that will more than cover this particular contract cost.
Uh, yes sir, so we're looking at, right now, we've held back about 300, roughly about 350,000 in liquidated damages and that's what's going to be able to fund this ad service by our construction manager.
You got contract, the liquidated damages is, as you said, it's about four times that, 240, I believe, and so that more than covers this.
Essentially, we're not looking at any add to the overall contract, we're just looking to supplement this with the liquidity damages.
Well, we're extending this contract, I mean, financially, the city, you're correct, we're not going to be out that money ultimately.
Yeah, I get the accounting, but ultimately the bottom line is we're, we're not adding to the cost of the contract. Just maybe for the purpose of the, the public record, can we expand on some of the issues that we, that we experienced on this project?
It might be better when we come back with the final on the construction contract and, you know, if we need to get into some of the legal briefings in the background of how that all went through. I mean, the contractor had some misses and delays and so it went well beyond the contract amount. So if you're okay with that, it might be more appropriate to that contract when that comes back to you.
I guess what I'm getting at with respect to this contract, we're confident that the construction management was not a contributor to the, the overruns on the project, correct?
That's not been correct.
Okay. We feel comfortable that they legitimately were doing work that was outside of their scope, not caused by any of their, anybody who was overlooking anything.
They were along for the extended time and doing what they were supposed to, but just took longer, yes.
Okay. With that, I have no objections to the extension, or to the ad service.
I think I'll make sure that we have a, not only a beautiful road, but increase our mobility with that, take a little stretch. Counsel, any further question or comment?
One comment Mayor, the difference in what we're spending on this planning contract and the $340,000 in liquidated damage, will that go into the construction phase of this contract?
The, I'm sorry, the benefit from the savings?
The $340,000 that was withheld in liquidated damages, part of us going to pay this and the amount will go toward the construction cost.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment, a question?
I've got one Mayor, I think we need to follow up on, and I've talked to him about it and I think I know where we're coming from on it, but the point is, my concern, if you have liquidated damages on something, there's got to be an incentive somewhere through there. I mean, if you're going to charge liquidated damages for coming in late, seem like, you know, if it's an incentive type contract, then if you complete it early, you would have something on it. And because they usually offset each other on the liquidated damages through there. But, and I talked to Robert Nim earlier and I think I understand where they're coming from on there, but my concern on there is how they come up the liquidated damages of $1,000 per day on there. And there's, normally there has to be something, a loss of revenue somewhere on, on something to be able to come up with liquidated damages and, and that value. I guess what I was told, this is what the city normally charges, is that correct?
I'll let engineering weigh in if, if they differ on this, but I know we've had, they vary from, some contracts have been $500 a day and other contracts have been $1,000 a day. That's part of the negotiation process upfront where the contractor agrees to what those damages would be on a per day basis.
Okay. So this has nothing to do with the AFA from Tech Dot on the funding part of it? We can't add that cost in there or anything like that, that stays the same as it is on the 80% of the funding, right?
That's correct, that's the construction estimate on the contract price from the very beginning on the AFA, that's set up there.
Okay.
If you're asking for a raise in the contract, no. The AFA funding is set based on the COG, HGAC and that project there.
So we're saying during that period of time of 300 and something days, oh, we're extending on the contract that the construction inspection was still going forward during that period of time? There's not any days that they weren't out there?
They were out there when the contractor was working, that is correct. So they were inspecting the job.
Okay. And so that was my concern on it, but it's still, at some point in time, I'd like to see how we come in with liquidated damages on, on, on these contracts because that's important to be able to justify that. And I guess, Aaron, what you're saying is that if we had a contractor that brought in an attorney that we could actually show where it cost us $1,000 a day for that individual for each day is running late.
I haven't audited those numbers to be able to speak specifically to that, however, the whole concept of liquidated damages that the contractor and the city upfront agree that the damages are going to be difficult to calculate and we're not certain of what those are going to be. So what we do is we try to agree ahead of time what those damages are going to be. And in this particular case, both parties agreed they'd be $1,000 per day. Obviously, at the time, I guess the contractor didn't anticipate that the project would be 340 days late, so.
Yeah.
And there's a cost to that. I'm not saying that, obviously, the contractor may not come back and contest that amount at some point, but right now that, that's what the contract was and obviously, I think the city can substantiate those costs during that process if, if called upon to do so.
Okay, so the only other one we got outstanding now, I guess what I'm assuming that we, what I've read through here, is that you still have the designer that's outstanding on what they're going to come in and ask for subsidy on it?
For the staff, moving the K to I, which is subject item. Okay.
Councilman Owen, with regards to the remainder of the amounts, those are listed in the memo, that's the Thursday memo packet that went out. You have Cobb Finley with their additional services, then also our GeoTest or geotechnical testing company that had to do additional testing material while the construction was ongoing beyond the allotted time. So we'll have those two items that were in negotiation with Tech Dot right now on reimbursement.
Okay, so we can't close out this contract until we find out what those charges are going to be back into us?
That is correct, we have those charges and we're working with Tech Dot to set up.
Okay, and then there's nothing on Cobb Finley to say that there were some errors in the design or anything like that that they provided?
Nothing that we found in terms of errors in design that you're talking about.
Okay. And geotechnical was under Cobb Finley?
Geotechnical was under Cobb Finley, a company called GeoTest.
Yeah, okay. All right. That's all I have.
Does that complete your report? Your comments, okay. Does Counsel have any further comment or questions on item? Aye, which is, there are none, we do have motion second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item nine, there's matters removed from consent agenda, which we just discussed at this point. Moving to 12, due business. Due business item number one, Councilmember Perez.
Uh, thank you Mayor, I'd like to say this is a great honor that I get to present this, but I'd like to thank Councilmember Owens and Hernandez for initiating this action. So first item on the agenda is council input and discussion for commemorative naming of Pearland Public Safety Building as the J.C. Doyle Public Safety Building.
Of motion?
It's discussion item, Mayor.
Okay. Good item. Counsel report.
Thank you Mayor and Council, as was referenced, very honored that this idea has come to fruition. We're all familiar that we lost our longstanding police chief, Chris Doyle, earlier this year and we want to honor him and respect his service by this naming that was suggested by council, but which we wholeheartedly support. And as to add this J.C. Doyle Public Safety Building name will, if, assuming that's endorsed by the council tonight, you know, at least in the discussion, then we'll move forward to finalizing that and having a ceremony to do that. So again, somebody that we want to, we've always looked up to and now we'll literally be able to think about, look up to him when we go by that building name, so thank you sir.
That's for sure. You know, that's, it's kind of interesting how the chief wound up in the safety building because he started out, well, actually graduated from high school with my son, and he started out in what is now the neighborhood center building, sharing the building with the city council, municipal court, and the police department. And he survived that particular post environment, even had the jail at the back of it. And then we moved to the next stage in the placement of the, of the police department, that is the building out on Veterans Drive, which provided the room for the police department and the municipal court. And he went over there and, and kept increasing our police department, refining it, making appropriate things that need to be done to advance the quality of service in Pearland. And we'd found out he was outgrowing the building there. So we had to move, build the public safety building out on Cullen Drive and move the court portion for, for a portion of that facility over to City Hall for temporary, until we finished the public safety building. So he was tenacious in that he not only did a tremendous job, but he always went to a new place, it was open business, doing the same old good business as usual and promoted the quality of public safety in Pearland. And I've always thought that that was sort of symbolic of what a police chief ought to do. Start out little in a small crowded building, move upward and then finally get a big one that just kind of suits his style. And it worked just perfectly and this is a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful gesture on the city. Councilmember Owens?
Yeah, appreciate it Mayor. You know, this, one of the things I would like to, one of our former council members, Susan Schraus, had sent me a text on it, asked me about it if we could do this and so we, of course, you know, for us to be able to do it, we have to have two signatures from council to do it. And so I wrote it up and everything to do the two or three sentences, all it took. And went to an event and Adrian's there and he just hopped right on it, you know, come on, let me sign it, we'll, we'll move forward with it. But, you know, for an individual that spent 38 years with the city, you know, that's a feat in itself to do that. And, and then also he's the longest serving police chief that we had. And I was telling his family earlier, I had his number on speed dial for several years. So, so that was, you know, it was always answered when I'd, when I'd call him up. But anyway, you know, I think it's only serving for us to do that, I think it's deserving of that for the number of years he's put in and the other. We only had one time that I'd really having discussions with him and that's when I thought we should have police motorcycles. And it took me two years to convince him of it, while I was still on council, that's what we need, you know, to help us in our traffic out there. But he did have the nerve after it was done and the next year to come back and tell me that, you know, said, when we went ahead and put those in service with the people and the motorcycles, that they paid for everything the first year that they was in service. And so that was, that was really good. So Chief Spires, you know, we're going to talk about trying to, to get some more motorcycles out there on there, but, but I'm just glad we were able to do this and not only for the chief, but the family also. There's a dedication of the number of years that he spent, you know, working for the, the city of Pearland and, and it not only for him, but it also tests the family also a lot of times when, when he wasn't there. So I just appreciate the opportunity to come up and to be able to do this with Chief Doyle. Adrian?
I thought it would be kind of cool actually just to read this background, which was fun reading for me and so everybody here can have a better understanding of why we're doing this. So it says, Joseph Christopher Doyle, it's J.C. Doyle, began his public service as a Pearland police officer in 1979 and continued to do so throughout the course of his professional career until his retirement as chief of police in 2017. His 38 years of service to Pearland allowed him to experience every single aspect of the Pearland Police Department, having served as an officer, detective, patrol sergeant, commander of the area's multi-agency SWAT team, lieutenant, assistant chief, and ultimately chief of police. Chief Doyle became our top law enforcement official in 1999 and made major contributions to the city's use of law enforcement technology, prioritizing the procurement and use of the most advanced police radio equipment, as well as mobile data terminals, in-vehicle dash cameras, and ultimately body camera surveillance technology for officers. One of the most notable contributions Chief Doyle made prior to his retirement was the implementation of the data-driven approaches to crime and traffic safety, you'll hear us refer to that as D-Dax model, which Pearland was the first police agency of its kind to institute. Chief Doyle made an indelible impact on our community, one that will stand the test of time and continue to help our current police force fend off threats to public safety in a number of ways. Memorializing his contributions in the form of a commemorative naming of the Pearland Public Safety Building is one way his legacy can, can be preserved. So that's why we're here today, it was kind of, you know, nice that they put this in here for us to, to read the background. Some of us had, may not have had the longstanding relationship like Woody had with him, but still knew, you know, of his legacy from hearing stories from others and being able to read his, his background and his history here in the city. It was an easy decision to support this, so thank you.
Thank you Mayor. Obviously, for the purpose of the discussion, I don't think, I don't think Woody would have had a problem getting six people to second it. The law doesn't allow that to happen, but I, I don't think that there's, there's anyone who would speak out against this. He was a highly respected individual amongst current council members, former council members throughout our community. I had the privilege of interacting with him in three different ways, first as a staff member when I first came to Pearland, then as a citizen when I ran into him out in the community, and then as a council member. What, what always struck me is he never treated me any different, no matter the position. He always treated me with respect and dignity and he did that for everybody. He really, he wasn't, I didn't work for him, you know, I worked with him on occasion, more tangentially, even from, as a council member and as a staff member, but I always looked up to him. He really did have a great effect on me, just the way he treated people and the way he treated this community. And I think this is a great way to commemorate a great man who meant a lot to Pearland. One of the other things I'd like to say is I think definitive sign of, of leadership is what you leave behind. You know, I don't think any good leader is a good leader if they need to be in that position in order to lead. And I think when he left and Chief Spires was, was put in that position and there was an area hiccup, I think that's a great testament and continues to be a great testament to Chief Doyle's leadership, that he left, he left the department in a good position where somebody else could lead it and he left it, he trained somebody. where somebody else could lead it, and he left it, he trained somebody to be able to take over without, without any loss to the department, without any loss of leadership. So I think as long as Chief Spires and all that he trains below him are part of the department, Chief Doyle's legacy will continue. I think this is a great, a great move, and I don't think we can get those letters up on that building fast enough.
I want to.
Thank you, Mayor. I always thought Chief is a man of few words, so I'm going to stick with his legacy, and so I completely agree 100%. I'm sorry for the family's loss. Can't say that enough, and I don't know, we're here for you, as is the rest of the city and the department.
My condolences to the family. I never had the pleasure of meeting Chief Doyle, but I've never heard anyone say a bad word about him, so had to be a pretty remarkable person.
You know, I also think it's very appropriate he graduated from high school. He's a homegrown guy, and he was homegrown law enforcement. And it's been very fortunately continued with Chief Spires and the present police department, because when they step out, they're stepping out with a legend. So I think it's wonderful.
Mayor, I've got one thing I do want to say, and probably, you know, people know that, and I've said it before. I have a friend that's in the Harris County Department, and also with the City of Houston Police Department. And they always told me that anytime they got in a road chase with anybody or any criminals, they tried to force them down 288, because they never would get away from the Pearland Police Department. I mean, and that's, that's a legacy of the police department here. I mean, having a staff like that, and people that even have the credibility. And I was out of town one time when they showed it on TV of us making arrests of this guy in a, in a police truck. It was on national TV. And going out through the field out there, and he opened the door when he got up close to the guy that was running away, and knocked him down. And so when I went to meeting after that, they said, "Did you see what went on?" And I said, "Yeah, the only thing that they didn't do, he was supposed to hogtie him and throw him in the back of the truck." So, but, but it was national all the way over. But, you know, that's the kind of police department we got here, and it's, it's, they're very well-respected in the communities around us, having a top-notch police department. I think a lot of that has to do with Chief Doyle, like was said, but also it's being carried forward too. So, that's good.
We're honored to have his family here tonight, and I was thinking that, what Chief Doyle would say, he'd say something along the lines of John Wayne shucks, apple shucks. But it, it's interesting how your young people, when they graduate from high school in Pearland, can grow up and, and leave a legacy of experience and results. And it's just something that, but sometimes you can do things that are appropriate as a council, and I think this is one of those, and I appreciate that. Does council have any further other comments at this point?
Mayor, I think very appropriate and appreciated comments, and I know the family didn't want to make any presentation or comments. I know they appreciate what's said, but if you wouldn't mind me just standing so we could all recognize and thank you, that'd be wonderful, so. So Mayor, we'll proceed with the formalities and the preparation, and then get back to you, so we can do something right at the PSP there.
Moving in our agenda, back to item number two, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1568-2, so moved.
We have a motion and a second word discussion, staff report.
So Mayor, I'll ask Mr. McCarter to walk you through a little high-level review of the budget amendment. This is the second one. We're halfway through the fiscal year and bring this to you, first reading here.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. My name's John McCarter, budget and procurement manager here with the City of Pearland. Before I dive in, I just wanted to recognize the budget staff that are here today. Neely Walker, our senior budget analyst, and Rich Winslow, our budget analyst, as well as Cynthia Pearson in the back, our finance department, and all the staff who are here today, who really did the hard work behind the scenes making this happen, as well as the city manager's office for their leadership. So before we talk numbers, I think it's important to establish what the purpose of this budget amendment is. This is the second one that we've had this fiscal year. We adopt the budget in September, and then amend it in December to do carryovers from the prior fiscal year. This is to do final year-end projections. It really gives us a baseline for us to use going into FY '20. Some things have changed, and we do some operational adjustments. This year, we are lucky enough to have a bit of surplus, so we can do a mid-year allocation of some major items that have been outstanding and are a priority for us to move through. And they just allow us to align that spending with our resources to put us in a good place for FY '20. So our process internally, I know we do our early budget input in February with, with council, and then we kick that off formally on March 5th. And then we hand it off to the departments here, who go through all of their account numbers and get it back to us, and we sit and review that, argue about salary costs and whatnot. On May 30th, we sent out a Thursday packet with our preliminary projections for water and sewer, debt service, and general fund. We did have pretty much everything else wrapped up at that point, and that brings us to today. June 10th, we'll be back on the 24th for a second reading of the budget amendment to finalize that. So starting with the general fund, this is kind of an overview of the income statement. I will dive into the operational adjustments and the mid-year allocation for both revenue and expenditures in a few slides, but I did want to point out a few highlights here. First of all, the policy minimum fund balance here in the adopted budget was a little bit lower. We did increase that to 60 days pursuant to some direction from council. So that's why the policy, or the ending fund balance is higher, but you see the amount over policy actually looks lower. This amendment, not only are we making some contributions to streets, sidewalks, and vehicles, among a number of other things, is over $900,000 being contributed to fund balance, which brings us to just over 60 days, which I know was a point of discussion at the audit time when we presented that, and also the direction from council at the end of the last budget cycle was to get to 25% over the next several years. We're able to make this contribution now, get to 60 days to give us a baseline going into '20. So we're, we're very happy about that. I also want to note that what is not represented here is about roughly $1.6 million for a FEMA reimbursement. If you remember, we have shared that out, that number out a few times. We do cautiously, optimistically anticipate receiving that. Joel Hardy's been working hard on that. But we didn't want to budget for it just in case something weird happened with processing through the federal government. When we do receive that, we will roll that into the budget, bring it back to you guys for allocating those funds out. But that is not included in today's projection. Before I dive into this slide, if you're following on your packet, there were actually two typos on this slide that we caught this morning. Investment earnings and the subtotal were off by a little bit. They've been updated here, but if you're following along, I apologize for that, that was an oversight. Starting with property taxes, we're seeing, we're going, we're projecting an increase of about $1.5 million, that's just over 3% from our amended budget. That's basically because we got more from our frozen values than we had anticipated. We essentially have to guess at what we're going to get for those. It came in higher. The good thing is, that rolls right into our base for next year, so that's a recurring revenue. Sales tax, we see increasing by $15,000. That $15,000 is for our mixed beverage tax, which is going up very slightly. For our actual sales and use taxes, we are staying flat with our projection. Recently, we budgeted about 1%, a little over 1% increase from our FY '18 actual. We've seen that slow down a little bit recently, and we want to be conservative, leave it where it is. We're pretty much right at budget, if you've been following along on the sales tax reports that have been shared out. I just checked before I walked in today, I don't think we've seen the June numbers just yet, but we should have a report out this week to update that. No major change to franchise fees. The license and permits is a bit of good news. We're over budget there. Again, to stay conservative, we're remaining relatively flat. But really, the last two years, we've been talking about a reduction there, and we have seen that start to level off, which is nice to see. Fines and forfeitures, going up about $240,000. We budgeted a drop of $200,000 in fines and forfeitures, just following a trend that we've seen really since 2016, and that dropping every year. This may be, this might be the bottom of that, we start to level out. This brings us just about level with where we were last year. Charges for services, for the most part, is a reduction in our TERS administrative fee, which is 67% of the property tax revenue coming from the TERS. This is just based on lower than we've seen on the collections rate, so we adjust for that, kind of the opposite from what we talked about with the property taxes. This is just not coming in the way that we thought it would, so we're adjusting down and getting it aligned there. Our investment earnings represent an increase of $200,000 to $450,000, a credit to the good work that our treasury division does to get us a bang for the buck on that fund balance. And the miscellaneous is kind of the last big one there, that really is sale of property that drives that. We really can't predict that before the fiscal year starts, so we just realize that as we go along. And I'll talk about that transfer in in just a minute. So hitting on the operational expenditures versus the mid-year allocation, you'll notice in the income statement on the first slide, there were two separate items. So the operational expenditure, excuse me, adjustments are really just, as we've gone through the fiscal year, things are trending different than we thought we would. We had to shift some money around between accounts and things like that. The great news is that on the expenditure side, we're down $193,000, which we're able to reallocate out through that mid-year allocation. Our salary savings at $78,000 are a little bit less than we typically see. We saw a lot of retirements this year, so that sucked up a lot of that budget. But despite that, we saw some reductions in buildings and grounds, transfers out. The buildings and grounds is because, credit to our public works staff, who've done a great job managing our HVAC system. So we've seen the less catastrophic failures this year than we have in prior years. So thanks to them. And the transfers out is a reduction because in our property liability fund, we were able to use fund balance rather than transferring in to cover that. So we just adjust that down at mid-year. We've, we've done that before as well. The contractual services line item, most of that comes from bank charges, so just the credit card fees are trending a little higher than we've seen in prior years. We did see some increases, nothing over $20,000 or so from department levels. This is a pretty big line item, represents about 4% or 5% change here. But move from other funds, net total, we're still down $193,000, which is right exactly where we want to be. Onto the good stuff, the mid-year allocation items. So as we talked about, we are seeing an increase in revenue and some savings on the operations side. So we want to come back and allocate that money now to get us down to that policy minimum, again, set us up for FY '20, so we're not structurally imbalanced there. This also allows us to get a jump on things, to get those started now, rather than waiting until October, a few months from now. The top priority established this, this go-round was for our replacement vehicles, really because of the, the pretty big lead time that we've seen on getting those actually on the streets. These are all police vehicles. This represents all the vehicles that were removed from the budget in FY '18, less one. So we still have one more we got to pick up next year, but this almost gets us back to where we should have been last year. Moving on to street and sidewalk funding, each represents $100,000. This obviously does not get us to where we need to be, but it's an amount that we're comfortable that we'll be able to spend and program this fiscal year. These three items, really pursuant to council's direction, remain a top priority for next year, to bring those back up to where they've been in previous years, and even over that, to get to the targets that we need to get. The citywide survey benchmarks, really a function with the engineering department, to put these benchmarks across the city. Right now, it's a bit of a hodgepodge, but this would standardize it, save some costs on projects with surveying. This was an item that was in 2018's budget that got removed at mid-year, so this is just putting that back in for us to carry through with that, but that was approved as a part of the FY '18 budget. The emergency operations center revamp was an item that we discussed at mid-year. A consensus of council agreed that we wanted to include that here. This $49,000 allows us to basically replace all the technological infrastructure and bring it up, so it's a functioning EOC at this point. We're not there, but this money gets us there, which would be a great step for us. The Microsoft enterprise agreement at $52,000, this is the only item in this list that is reoccurring. Given some of these cybersecurity issues that we've seen in the news lately, and really lacking on the functionality with our own Microsoft suite, it made sense to jump at this right now. 30% of this, I believe, is paid from water and sewer as well, so this is kind of a fraction of the cost, but that will be a reoccurring item. The capital projects truck, this is an F-150. Right now, the projects group is using their personal vehicles, which cost the city money in mileage, and frankly, is a little unfair to the employees. This is offset by an increase in the transfers in from those capital funds. So then, if this is removed, basically, it's just a net zero. So there's an offset there. Lastly, the natatorium lighting, this was an item, I believe, that was added after the memo went out. We have been experiencing a big spike in issues with the lighting at the natatorium. This $50,000 allows us to replace the existing lights with LED lights and really keep that facility functioning where it needs to be. So those are summary of the mid-year allocation items, $892,000, a little less than half of the total money we're talking about, because remember, over $900,000 is going into fund balance to increase that. But we feel this is a good balance of, of resources to advance on those fronts. Water and sewer fund, looking at this, we do see a reduction in our, or I'm sorry, a drawdown of $354,000 this year. Probably the headline is the water and sewer, water sales revenue and sewer sales. If you've been keeping up with the monthly reports we've been putting out on that revenue, we've really seen a drop in consumption across all cycles and across all customer types, so not just commercial, not just residential. You know, we, if you remember, last year, we had a 0% rate increase. We still built in an increase to the revenue because we are still developing at such a high level, that the assumption was, consumption would stay flat, more meters equals more revenue. Well, more meters have come through, and like I said, we, what the building permit represents, there is continuing development, we're just seeing less consumption, and that's really reduced, reduced that down. However, somewhat luckily, again, we see an increase in our interest earnings from our fund balance, and also $2.3 million for the sale of the package plant to Missouri City. So that offsets most of that, but we still see a reduction in revenue of about $838,000. That reduction in consumption is something that we'll keep an eye on and report back to as we head into the rate model discussion with the budget, because that's a big deal. So we will, we will keep that at the top of our radar. On the expense side, a little bit of a silver lining, with the reduction in the water sales, we buy less water from other people to sell. So we did see a reduction of $1.4 million in our purchase of water account, obviously not a one-to-one or even close. But we were also able to get about $642,000 reduction in repair and maintenance, and $452,000 in contractual services, related, not necessarily directly tied to that drop, but that, that helped us out there. We also have a $2.3 million increase for capital contributions to the City of Houston's water facilities, because as a customer of theirs, we're contractually obligated to make those payments, and we were billed, I think, in arrears for those. So we want to just get those out of the way. I do want to mention two more changes that we saw on the debt service side. This is all in the write-up, so, but not in the PowerPoint. On the debt service side, we did see a reduction in our mud rebates. They make up 20% of our total expenditures on the debt side, so that was nice to see and a big deal. We also had a memo from our public works director last week about the need to replace some Vector trucks on the water and sewer side, so we did add $200,000 for kind of a stopgap solution, and then $1.1 million in the debt issuance, which you will all see in two weeks. That's reflected in the capital funds in Exhibit A. There's also a street sweeper in there, we've talked about that vehicle, went down as well. So those two items are some major changes. With that, I'll say we're back on the 24th for the second reading, and I would love to field any questions anyone has.
On the new equipment that, I guess the three pieces is what we, are we selling those, or put them out for surplus and auction them off, or what?
Yeah, the, the equipment that goes down, we will sell. Mr. Whitworth might be able to get into more detail, but at this point, it, none of them are usable. So I don't know what that's going to feel. usable, so I don't know what that's going to fetch, but they will go up for auction.
Yeah, and does that come out of the enterprise fund, or does it come, the equipment fund that you had set up, or what?
So the, the funds will come into a capital fund because it's through COs, certificates of obligation, and then the water and sewer fund will pay that fund or the balance of the payment, if that makes sense. It ends up coming out of water and sewer, but it's got to filter through that capital fund because it's a part of the debt issuance. And we hope, we'll see where we end up going, but we'd like to pay these off early or structure them a little shorter term, because it's not a huge dollar amount.
When we talk about the water and sewer fund on there, I know that, I guess, we'll go into construction here before long for the surface water plant. And I don't know, was it come online in probably three years from now or whatever? What kind of impact is that going to do when we sell those bonds for that? What's it going to do to the water rate?
That's a great question. So what that ends up having, there's the debt service component, which is pretty obvious, but when we hold that much debt, we have our minimum fund balance goes up in the enterprise fund. That's going to have a big impact on our rate when we do that eventually. We are structuring the increases in a way that we don't spike it up all at once. I mean, we don't want to have a 30% rate increase in one year, and I'm not proposing that we would have to do that, but it will have an impact on the rate when that debt comes on board in, I think, two years.
That's probably, some of those bonds, a pretty significant amount.
Absolutely, Mr. .
On there, so.
If I could, though, that's been anticipated and built into the rate model, and we know that, so the numbers you've seen for the rate changes all anticipate the debt necessary and the cash balances, so none of this is surprise. We're fully obligated with the design, as you know, and the TWDB fund, funding of that. So, you know, the rates, in some ways, are what they are, and you've seen that, and we'll adjust those and look at those each year, but those have been anticipated in your multi-year rate analysis.
And those are in the budget book as well, the rate analysis. It's the last year in that multi-year.
Okay, so we'll have some more information on that when we go into the budget process in the next couple of months or what.
Yeah, and we'll update those, and, you know, we have to take into consideration the usage and the actual fund balances, and you'll see that another six weeks, I guess.
How much was a play that we had borrowed from the Texas Water Authority?
The project cost was $155 million, plus or minus. The TWDB lent borrowing order magnitude, two-thirds of that, maybe?
I thought it was significantly more.
So 130, give or take.
30.
A few million, hate to forget.
Okay, so, and to complete the construction of that surface water plant, we're talking about $130 million roughly.
Yeah, there's a supplement of revenue bonds that goes in with that. It's not 100% TWDB, so there's a little bit of revenue bonds that'll come in, I believe, later in the project.
Okay, so we'll discuss that as we go through the budget process, okay?
What is, what is the likelihood that we'll ever see the $1.6 million FEMA reimbursement? And if you expect that we'll see that approximately, when do you think we'll get it?
I'll take that, because it's good news. I mean, it's, you're going to see, if we haven't gotten the wire transfer ready, we're going to get that money into the solid waste fund within days. And the money from the FEMA reimbursement for the emergency protective measures, the category B, you'll, as we said in there, we're going to see that before the end of August, and there's no reason that we shouldn't see that number deposited then this fiscal year. So as we highlighted in there, we have not built that into these numbers, but that's only going to contribute positively to the bottom line and as we go into the next budget year. So we just, we haven't gotten it in the bank, so these good numbers will get better when we, when we go into the budget next year.
You may have touched on it, but I was probably not listening to you, and I apologize. How are we so far off in our estimate of our sales tax revenue?
The sales tax revenue is pretty much right on right now. The property tax is the one, are you referring to this slide here?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, the 1.5 million at the top there. You know, when we do the estimates for the property tax levy, the, I could get this wrong, the appraisal officer, the tax office, gives us kind of a baseline, not including any kind of senior citizen, disability, veterans-type value. So we have to go back and look historically at what that was and try to make an educated guess, and we just missed it by more than we typically do this year. Silver lining, and not to justify being off this way, and we're looking at how we're getting better. Usually, we're coming down on property tax, but this is absolutely top of our list for next year to try to find a better way to get closer, because we want that 1.5 in our adopted budget, not mid-year.
Okay. One more thing. On these vehicles, the two trucks and the street sweeper that we received the memo on, and all three state that they're near their useful, into their useful life. Why weren't these things budgeted?
Lack of funds. I mean, they were on lists, anticipated, but, you know, we have to cut, and they're large-ticket items, so in this case, we literally drove them till they dropped, and so, when we get this internal service fund and this fleet fund, we'll be in a better position to be able to save up for these things, and it won't cause these spikes and heartaches when we're doing the budget. So we knew this was coming at some point, it just happened probably a little bit sooner, but, you know, they were both on their last legs, so.
The estimated cost to repair these things is a fraction of what a new one would cost. What type of additional useful life would we get out of them if we?
10-plus years when we buy the new ones, and we won't have those kinds of repair bills. And the sweet sweepers are always going to be, they're very high intensity, I mean, they're go-in for repairs, and, but, you know, I don't know if it was a street sweeper or the Vector, one of them, the shop told us basically, quit sending this to us, we can't patch it up anymore, so.
Since we have a contract to sweep the federal roads, where are these sweepers utilized? Because I've had people tell me, I've never seen a street sweeper in parallel.
Well, they're putting that out at all times in all of the streets, so, I mean.
While we were having this conversation at lunch, there goes a street sweeper to Broadway.
Right, right.
That's the contract, the street sweeper.
We planned that for you, yes. No, they are, the additional, we've got an obligation, and we need to maintain the storm system with these. So the contract, when we brought that to you, is a supplement. We still, ideally, we need to have our own, and so this would add to that. I wouldn't want to tell you that we can lower the contract significantly, we need to have both, basically, so.
So I had a comment on the benchmarks. I just, I kind of, a gut feeling said, based off of just some very preliminary research to see if that's possible to move that funding to streets and sidewalks, but I'm going to, beyond a gut feeling, I'm going to yield to Councilmember Perez for more justification as to maybe why I feel that way.
I tried, these are kind of going to get directed over towards the engineering department. I don't know if it's, if you're comfortable answering these, or if you want to drag Robert in here.
I'll try, and I'll text him to come back in.
So on the general fund, look, I mean, it's, obviously, we made a hiccup, it's a minor hiccup, I think, and it's understandable. These things have, these processes are imperfect, but I appreciate it's on the plus side. With respect to the projects we want to do, I don't really have anything, I don't have any disagreements with generally how we're spending them and the projects we're going after. I would just kind of ask a few questions with respect to prioritizing some of these items versus the others. So I'll start with the benchmarks. So I don't disagree, our benchmarking is, is not good. They're too far spread out. I don't think that they've been adjusted in a while, and who knows whether they're, whether those items are accurate. But I don't think we're critical right now, and I'd like to try and see that, maybe potentially move this 114 somewhere else, and then put that benchmark as a priority for next year's To continue the discussions, on the additional street funding, the sidewalk funding, $100,000 isn't going to get as much as any kind of streets, but it'd get a lot of sidewalk. So I'm, my gut is telling me, why don't we just take the benchmarking and the street funding, move it in sidewalk, and let's try and get as much sidewalk as we can with the additional, additional money. The benchmarking, it's been a mess, it'll continue to be a mess. Good surveyors can make the most of it, surveyors I know can make the most of it. I wouldn't say it's a, it's a critical item. It needs to be dealt with, and I'm not trivializing, but it needs to be dealt with, but I wouldn't say that it's as critical as adding, adding funding, additional funding to sidewalks, because there's too many tripers out there that we, we just can't catch up with. And then, with respect to the F-150 for capital projects staff, I don't disagree. We can't, I would much, I don't, I don't care to see our employees using their own vehicles to go out on projects, but a couple of questions. One, we're asking to add one vehicle, but how many, how many project managers do we have that have to travel to job sites?
Councilman Perez, we have a total of six project managers at this time, along with two construction managers. So the current existing fleet for public, for projects is the two current assigned vehicles that we have that are, that are, belong to the department, are utilized by the construction managers, and then we have a certain amount of vehicles that we've worked with, fleets, to be able to be stored out at the Hill House site, to be able to try and use as much as possible.
Ideally, how many vehicles would we want to add to keep them, keep any of our project management staff from using their personal, their POVs?
Currently, I have a request in with the one here, plus an additional three for next year.
And does it need to be a, does it need to be a truck, or can we, can we go with a smaller, cheaper car?
I can utilize a, a small SUV would be great to be able to travel in partnership to meetings, so that if we need to go to Tex-DoT and three of us need to go to Tex-DoT, then we can, they can miserate in a vehicle too as well.
Again, I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather us use some of that benchmark money and maybe get some more vehicles, so our staff's not using POVs, and then look at the benchmarking as part of next year's budget. Again, not to trivialize the priority of the benchmark, I just, if we're doing, if we're talking about staff not using their POVs, or updating some benchmarks, and making the surveyors have to do a little bit more work when they're coming out here, I'd rather get staff out of their POVs when they're going, going to job sites. So I guess that's where I would try and move towards, maybe remove the, my personal opinion is, remove the $100,000 from the street funds, move that into the sidewalk funds, see if we can maybe get one more, two more vehicles paid for, for project staff, and then remaining for the benchmark, go into the sidewalk fund, and let's try and get as much sidewalk as we can. On the, on the enterprise fund, again, I don't disagree with the necessity of it, I just don't feel comfortable that going, taking out debt to drive, to buy these vehicles. I may be alone on this, but using COs to buy a street sweeper and two new trucks, while I know we need them, but especially as this may come along a few months before we get some FEMA reimbursement, it may be, maybe it's an option, maybe it should be an option for us to wait for the FEMA reimbursement, and once we get that in, we look at the allocation and see if we can avoid taking on the debt and just pay for these outright with the FEMA funds. I don't know if there's going to be, if that causes any consternation because it's enterprise fund as opposed to general?
It likely would. I mean, we could buy a Vector truck, or Streets and Drainage, I believe, has one, which would be general fund, but the two proposed here are enterprise fund, so we'd have to use enterprise fund money for that, if we want to.
Well, we couldn't, we couldn't do, take it in, take the FEMA money, put it into the general fund and do a fund transfer over to the enterprise?
We wouldn't want to start mixing it that way. I mean, we try to, no, we keep those separate buckets, and enterprise fund needs to pay for that, just like anything else. I mean, the FEMA money is reimbursing the city for general obligation expenses that were made. That's why the solid waste money went to that fund.
There is a water and sewer FEMA reimbursement coming back, but it's, it's very small, not to do the truck.
I just, it just, it caused me a little bit of headache to go, to do this with COs.
If I could, the alternative we looked at was a lease agreement, which the city's done in the past, which, sort of the same lines, I wasn't very keen on, seems like the city needs to pay for that, but it is a major capital item, and the useful life is 10-plus have been assured, and we'd structure the debt to run with that, so.
What would we be looking at on a lease agreement? Do we have an idea?
The terms don't think would be as favorable as an interest rate, we can run that for you, so.
Yeah, I mean, if we could, if we could avoid doing the CO and take on a lease, at least until we get the, the motor pool balance up, or I'm sorry, the fleet balance up, trying to see you shaking your head, what is your objection?
I just, I don't think we're going to see that motor pool fleet up to a point where we're buying those type of vehicles in the short term.
The salvation for the fleet's not going to be until the city gets a TERS reimbursement back in four or five years, and even then, we're just trying to get us up to an acceptable level, so.
On vehicles like this, of course, the way the motor pool will work is basically, it'll be paid, you know, depreciated and paid for into the motor pool over the life of the, of the equipment, over the 10 years. So it'd be 10 years before we'd really have that built to a point to purchase this type of equipment.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying, I'm mixing in two conversations, the one from a couple of, or three meetings ago, where we discussed the street sweeper, and we were told, street sweepers are notoriously, notoriously require regular maintenance, they break down a lot, and for us to take on debt for something that we know we're going to have an added cost, not only for the interest on the debt, but also regular maintenance on this, on this vehicle, you know, is, is a lease a better solution, where we could potentially write into the lease that there's some maintenance, maybe, you know, we hold on to one of these for five years and then replace it, as opposed to having our guys constantly having to fix this thing? It's just taking on the debt to do it is just, it doesn't, especially when we're tacking on enough debt as it is with the bonds, it just, it doesn't, I don't disagree with why staff is recommending it, and I know it's a pain to, for us to have equipment that doesn't work and for us not to replace it, but I don't know if stacking on more debt is the best idea to solve that problem. I could be wrong, and I could certainly be by my own on that, but I guess those are my opinions. I'd prefer not to go with COs for the vehicles, maybe take a look at some other options that doesn't require us taking on debt, and then mix all money out of street funding, put it in the sidewalks, pull money out of budget, or out of benchmarks, get staff, as much staff as we can in the projects department from using their POVs, and then whatever's remaining, put in the sidewalks. Those are my thoughts.
Before we move on, I wanted to add that I would support that as well. It's kind of in line with what I was thinking as far as putting more money into the sidewalks. I'm just, thank you for articulating that for me.
Thank you, Mayor. If you go back to Slide 5, can you remind us on the franchise fee that, what, five or 4.7 million dollar swing in the amended budget?
The?
From the 2.9 to 7.2?
I'm sorry, the 2.9 is the year-to-date through April, and we receive, most of these come in four times a year, so we really haven't received a whole lot of those just yet. So we're, we look at last year's year-to-date versus that, and there's some accruals in there. I have to get accounting to help me, because I do budget, but, yeah, it's relatively flat with what we've, what we've seen in past years.
Now, on this slide, you talk about the exemptions, causing them $1.5 million increase in property tax, but on the debt service, the write-up says it's coming in 1.5 short because of the same reason.
So, it's a good question. When, and I might have to ask Rhonda to help me out with this, but we essentially reversed the two when we did the budget, and you've got to think about, when you look at the split with the tax rate, it's 70/30-ish, 30 being general fund and 70 being the debt service, so it's a smaller percentage miss on the debt service side than it is on the general fund side. But, yeah, we essentially got our ratio wrong of what percentage needed to go where, and applied two different sets of assumptions, and that's what caused that. I know that's not a very good answer, but it's definitely one of our follow-ups for
Yeah, I don't, so basically, we screwed up on both sides, in both funds? Okay, all right. And then- And then I guess on the police vehicles, the 450 is getting us to where we wanted to be last year, less one. I guess I'd just say, as you go into the next budget cycle, keep that in mind. I mean, that's been a fight for a while, and I guess it's tough to hit and tough to budget for, but I can't remember the last time we've hit the vehicles, and same with streets and sidewalks. And in terms of the benchmarks, I won't be here for the second reading, so good luck. I see what you're saying, I guess I would rely back on staff and what they said, that if the 100K can make a noticeable difference to the streets, I mean, I know an additional 100K would help sidewalks as well, but I guess I would rely back on them, if they need the additional streets, 100K in streets to get something done over there, I'd hate to pull from it just to say we added more to sidewalks. That's all my comments, Mayor.
Well, maybe staff can offer some more input as to what they plan to do with maybe the 100,000 towards the streets and why that would be a priority over sidewalks.
Sure, and I'm going to have Clarence answer specifics, but just in general, you know, while the $100,000 looks small on street funding and what we actually need there, we've implemented new programs over the last year where we're doing more cracking joint ceiling, we're doing more in-house work where we're just buying materials, so that money will actually go further, further than, you know, you would think if we were just bidding out a contract for asphalt work or road work, and maybe Clarence can expound on, you know, the needs of sidewalks versus streets as well.
I think our biggest need right now is just that our pavement condition index is steadily going down in the streets. I'm not saying that we don't have some bad sidewalks out there that need to be done, but we've worked on an internal policy to try and address these instead of going in and replacing an entire neighborhood of sidewalks, which we have found in research in the past wasn't always necessary. Now, we've kind of refined the program to go in and find the troubled areas, replace the segment, or if it is needed, to do the whole thing. But right now, our initial research is just showing us that the streets seem to be in much more need, and some of that may be we didn't get as much done last year and the last fiscal year because of Hurricane Harvey, but we are trying to make up for that now.
Right, and so why are we taking that approach to splitting the difference? Why not put it all, if streets are higher need, we think that, why not put 200,000 towards the street? Doesn't matter.
I mean, the 200,000 towards streets is fine by me, and if you were asking Public Works Department opinion, I would say that that would be my preference. I would say I could use the 200,000 in streets more than sidewalks.
Okay, well, then maybe we move in that direction. And then the same thing with the benchmarks. How critical do you think the benchmarking is, and how much do you think it's causing us headache on our CIP side?
Well, it's more than just the CIP, Councilman Perez, it's also tying all our plats to as well. This way, we'll be on our own, on a city grid system that has a network back. What we're finding a lot on that is, they're pulling Harris County flood control markers, or they're setting some out that are, markers that are different, and so we're having to do separate adjustments, or find and locate adjustments. Elevation certificates that come in are based on 1975 datum, and we're running 1998 with 2001 adjustments. I know I'm diving into the weeds, but it'll help set up that grid, so then our, all of our projects, and then any plats that move forward from that point on within the development as we go back, would be tied to that city system. The other one is, associated with it, is with our community rating system. Part of our FEMA funding is that it's a point mechanism within that community rating system, criteria that we get evaluated on every five years and annually as well for updates, that can have some value that then relates and moves us up either to a seven or a six on the rating, and that allows us to get better insurance premiums as well. That's just one component of many in that community rating system, but that is one that does also reap some points. So, there's a couple aspects, more than just capital projects, it does go back to affect other departments as well.
I don't argue with any of those points. I know our CRS rating is important to all the citizens, I don't disagree that it causes some developers' headache when they've got to go quite a ways to find a benchmark that will accept. I just feel like taking care of our staff would be a higher priority to me, and then roll in the benchmark as a high priority for next year's budget.
In terms of adding the capital project trucks, I mean, that's funded out of the capital project, so if there's enough projects out there, then go buy you five trucks. I mean, it's a budget neutral to what we're talking about. Am I wrong in that?
Yeah, we pulled that out of the fund balance, we'd have to go, I don't want to make a commitment now, but we can take a look and see what would be available for those.
Well, earlier in the meeting, there's $340,000 of liquidated damages that'll be sitting in our account, so we'll grab it there.
I don't think that's how it works.
I mean, I think, yeah, it is, from the, right?
You know, I've got a question on the, well, it's just on the smaller capital projects truck. A lot of times, I go through Magnolia, going over to the other side, we've got three trucks that sits right there in front of the Lawrence Fenwick Building, that they're sitting there in the morning, and if you go by in the afternoon, they're still sitting there in the same location. Are those, who owns those trucks? Or is that Public Works, or is that Parks Department, or what? But they look like they never are moved on there, and I didn't know if it was the case that we could use one of those trucks instead of going out and buying another one. I don't know.
Councilman Rowan, those vehicles belong to the Parks Department, the Natural Resources Division. Two of those vehicles were transitioned to that division because they're, they're not in the best condition. I don't think they could be used for others. The Ranger truck is, I believe, a 1996, so that hasn't met some of the expectations just as far as mileage to be removed. Most of the work is done early in the morning, that team starts at about 6:00 a.m., so those are primarily used between about 6:00 a.m. and if I had to venture to guess, probably about 1:00 p.m., just before it gets too hot outside.
Yeah, so if they're, if they're really not any good, I don't know why we just don't get rid of them out there, or, you know, if they're not going to be used or whatever, because it looks like that they're still out there, you know, all the time. But, you know, the other thing that I ask, or on here, I guess, is the Emco sweeper, which is probably the world's worst sweeper to buy, but it looks like we do 50,000 miles over 12 years, or 330 miles a month. Is that something that we could look at outsourcing? I mean, the sweeper is $270,000, I guess it is? Life expectancy would be 10 years, maybe 12 years, or is that something, you're only doing about 330 miles a month?
Sure, and I think, you know, that probably trends down over the years as that vehicle is in the shop more often and unavailable, but we did, we just, you just approved a contract for outsourcing the bulk of our street sweeping, and that consisted of our major thoroughfares, our secondary thoroughfares, as well as special events and special call-outs, but the program, you know, looks to, over the years, start to extend that down into our major and minor collectors, as well as residential areas. You know, residential areas are some of the areas that we have the most issues with leaves and different things in our storm sewer system, and that's one of the main reasons for street sweeping, is the quality of our stormwater, and so having one available to us to extend down into those areas and sweep specific areas when there are issues and we get called out, we still have that need, even though the bulk of our day-to-day major thoroughfare, secondary thoroughfares is being done by the contract you just recently approved.
Okay, and the Vector truck, I can certainly say that that's needed. We should have it out now, getting ready for hurricane season, to go into inlets and doing the cleanings through the inlet, so the water can flow, you know, when it gets here, and this is the time of year, and I think, you know, the lead time on this, several months.
It will be several months, we do have a contract for that service as well, but it's very expensive. We mostly use that for lift station and wastewater plant, clean out and grit and fat oils and grease removal, but, you know, once we have what's planned for, which is one in distribution and collections, one with wastewater, and then one over in streets and drainage, that's really what we need, is the three of them, and we're just at a point now where we've got two that are basically broken down.
I'm kind of inclined to ask the staff to go back and adjust these numbers and allocate another $100,000 to sidewalk funding, try to buy a little goodwill from our citizens, that seems to be one of the primary complaints, recurring complaints that I hear. How urgent is lighting at an auditorium? I mean, $50,000, are we going to a full LED system, and can we replace them with the old lighting and give somebody a ladder and a bulb?
So, I'll respond partially to that. It's critical in regards to the lighting. There's been numerous complaints about it, we've had two safety issues recently, so, and yes, in answer to your question, it is LED lighting, which should last longer, and we do need to move forward with that. It's actually, from a safety standpoint, a must, and so that's my comment regarding the lighting specifically.
I'll just throw out to council, if you're interested in increasing that sidewalk funding for the second reading, you may want to suggest that, but we're contributing $900,000-something to fund balance, and again, that's before that FEMA money comes in in August, which we will get money, significant monies in. It's not a question of will it or won't it come in, so if you're comfortable and you want to do some sidewalks, the other factor is, we're six, seven months into the year, and there's some concerns about, you know, our ability to execute some of this work. I think we could do this amount, we could do some more, but there is a cap, you know, just physically on what we can manage to get done at some point, so we can do some more, and I just suggest, if you wanted to, take some of that, instead of all that contribution of fund balance that was outlined, we could lower some of that and put some of that to use, and know that you're also going to get that FEMA money coming in.
We're paying $25,000 for the lighting, and school district's paying the other 25?
We would need to scope that out with them and give them the heads up, we haven't done that, so that, you know, we wanted to introduce this, a new thing that's come up on us, but that's the agreement, is they are obligated for 50% of capital expenditures over $15,000.
In the actual expenditure, we've got some existing funds, so this is the balance to do all of the lighting. We were looking at potentially phasing it, but because of the safety issues that Mr. Branson mentioned, we wanted to present this, to do it all now, so this is the additional funds we need to do, and so I believe the total amount is somewhere around between $85,000 and $90,000, so that's the total amount that then would be, half of it would be the school district's responsibility.
And this is something we're contracting out, rather than doing in-house?
Yes, sir. We don't have the, you know, we don't have the electricians and the equipment, and so we would work with our contracted electrician to do the work.
You know, for as long as I've been on the council, we've had been, we have a challenge of how do we develop our city with the limited funds that we have, and it's a decision-making process. I know that we started out with nothing but vacant land, and everybody decided this is the place they want to come to, and they come, and we have tried to figure out how we could take our limited funds and put a number of sidewalks and streets and the parks and everything else in place, so it's, it's more down to a judgment as to what is the most important today, because we have probably money to fix that, but there's so many other things that need to be put in place, more vehicles and more facilities, and it's just, I think it's more of a case where when I go in the store to buy something, what's the most important thing I can buy with the funds I've got in my hand? And I think we're doing a pretty good job of it, and I think we're making some darn good progress, I think we're making, putting in a lot of qualitative stuff that we insist on putting in, and we should always continue that, but it just, there's just so much land out there that was nothing but vacant 10 years ago, and trying to put the people who are moving in faster than the normal city processes are expected in a city of our size, so it's, I think we're making some good decisions, I think we, we can't do everything, but with the money that we have available, I think that there's some that would probably need to be, oh, sorry, can't go. Five. Don't do recess. Okay, we're bleeding up here. Take a short break, three minutes. Three minutes. Our council return to order. If anybody can remember what we were talking about, we'll proceed.
So Mayor, if it helps at all, I think there's three topics that seem to be talked about most, and that was whether there would be additional allocation into sidewalks? And if so, from where that would, additional funding would come from? The street sweeper, whether to proceed with that now as suggested? Or whether to defer or fund that some other way? And the third was whether to proceed or not with the benchmark surveys? And if that were to come out, maybe that was one of the other funding uses? So there are three things that I heard most often. I don't know how council wants to take those up and move forward one way or another on this first reading.
Okay.
Well, let's take it one at a time. So continuing conversation, I was having with staff. If we gave you another $100,000 in sidewalk, do you think you could spend that, get that much sidewalk on the ground before the end of the fiscal year?
No, sir, I can't promise that with the way this weather's been. I honestly can't.
What about the streets? If we gave another $100,000 on streets, would you be able to spend that by the end of the fiscal year?
Are you talking about an additional or the $100,000 as they are right now?
Additional $100,000.
An additional, as they are, the 100 and 100, I can spend that. But if you were to give me another 100 in either one of those items, I cannot promise you that I could spend that.
Okay. And then, Robert, how critical do you think that getting the benchmarks done now is?
As Clarence stated, is that if you roll it up in there and then you try to move it over to next year for the benchmark system, then that's $100,000 I can take, that I'd be taking out of the potential street budget or sidewalk budget that could be allocated for them for next year. This way, it's already done, and we're tying everything we can to city benchmarks from this point forward.
And how many project vehicles are you going to include in next year's budget?
The request is stated is that I've asked for four total vehicles for the capital program to be funded from the capital fund.
And that would include adding this truck or exclude? So if you're asking for four, it'll be three in next year's budget if we give you this one?
That is correct.
Okay. Mayor, if we can't spend the money, then there's no point in, is it just be a rollover to next year's fund? So I think I'm facing a conversation with staff, and I appreciate you taking your time. With hesitation, I'm okay with moving forward with what was recommended. I do not feel comfortable moving forward with taking on debt to buy some vehicles out of the enterprise fund, though. I will be a no for that.
So your recommendation is go from $100,000 to $200,000 in sidewalk funding?
No, Mayor. My recommendation was to accept, with respect to the general fund, accept the recommendations that staff has presented, since they've said that if we move, if we move money into the sidewalk and the street funding, they just wouldn't have time to spend it at the end of the fiscal year.
It takes a while to get it connected up. Yep. It's probably harder to get street funding, because you sometimes have to have surveys and stuff.
Yes.
Mayor, you have...
I'm sorry, I missed a little bit of that. But we've amended the original motion, this would be the appropriate time to structure that. To formalize that. I mean, that's...
I think maybe we get some other ideas. See, make sure the councilor agree with that before I send a motion. I don't want to have us discussing that after a second.
Let's just leave it like it is, what they put in, put it in, this time.
I'm fine with that, but I do think that there's a budget-neutral way to add the project trucks now, whether you do it now or do it next year. I mean, it's coming out of other capital projects, so it's a budget-neutral items to the general fund. So if we need them, I'm fine with getting them. I don't know how that would work with this first reading. That's something that the staff can look into and maybe kick back for round two.
It's the will of council. We can amplify that, make that clear, and people that come after you can finalize that.
So I think if council's, I think if we're all on the same page, we're going to take the general fund amendments as recommended by staff, but we will not do the certificate of obligation for the two vehicles in the street sweeper at this time?
I'm okay with that.
Can you live with that?
The COs for the street sweeper and the two...
COs?
Yeah. Taking on debt to buy those vehicles.
So I guess the question I would have is, what are we doing with those vehicles? We're going to continue? I think in the write-up, it shows we're going to spend 200K, kind of a stopgap measure, till these would be ordered or delivered. I guess, if that passes, what's, how's staff going to proceed?
We'll have to take a look at that, because you're right, we need to, I mean, this is a budget amendment, so given that these have gone down, I don't know, I can tell you right now if we're going to have to increase the contract amount allocations in those areas to at least meet our obligations and minimize that. But so we may need to do that. We're also bringing you the debt issuances on the next meeting. And so we're going to have the COs, the 2019 water and sewer bonds, the general obligation bonds. So all that'll be packaged up, and you'll see that at the next meeting as well. The, yeah. So I don't know 100%. We'll have to write that up for the second reading, I guess.
Mr. Pearson, we did include some information on what we've spent on, in the past, on contracting out for vector trucks and that sort of use. And it's very, it's very expensive. As far as the street sweeping, we could add to the existing contract. We could just not sweep anything else and not be able to go respond to specific instances except through the contract. But we do know that we will have to use vector trucks, and we'll have to do that by contract.
Okay.
Well, can we, we can, we pull it out of this approval now, and then, would y'all have enough time, enough time by the next meeting to come up with some options, alternatives to the CO for buying those three vehicles in the lines of what you just discussed?
You know, as I mentioned, the financing for the debt is cheaper money, but we can go through the option, describe that for the lease or other monies. You know, so we can explain that, and then council can decide if we want to just keep paying the contract, or want to select that lease option, or, you know, look at it, I guess, the next budget for paying cash. But this is something that, yeah.
What's the policy on the fund balance for the enterprise fund?
So that's really driven, as Mr. McCarthy alluded to, we've got a policy number, but then we've got bond covenants that drive that up even beyond that. So the debt policy, I'm sorry, the fund balance policy sets one number, but then we've got these other obligations that drive it up even higher.
I guess that'd be the question, is what is that? And how far over that minimum balance, whether it be policy or debt service? Oh, you joined us?
I did. So the policy number for enterprise fund is 25% of O&M.
So your question, Member Carbone, if I could, was, you know, do we have any access of the minimum that we could pay cash potentially?
Right. 25% of O&M expense?
Yes, sir.
Which is, what, roughly 54 million?
You have to back off the debt service payment.
Okay. Even if it, even if it was...
It would be drawn down from the balance.
Yeah, it would be, it would draw down the balance.
We would have enough to cover.
We've got enough cash over any minimums.
Correct.
I mean, that's the option, you don't issue COs, just go pay for it cash. It's the next.
We want to, for the next meeting, write that up and look at that over the course of probably four years, because Councilmember Owens hit on, when we have that reserve for debt limit go up, when we get the surface water plant on, it could exacerbate that. We'd have to run numbers for that, but...
Yeah. I mean, the fund balance is a little bit artificially high now to soften the blow of when the surface water plant comes on. And so I mean, it's, do you take out debt now in the terms of CO? Or do you pay cash and hit it, hit the rate harder later? But you'll figure that out next meeting.
So why don't, why don't I move to amend the motion to accept the general fund recommendations as presented, but exclude the, exclude the CO of 1.1 million for the two new trucks and the street sweeper?
Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay. That's amended motion now?
We have to vote on the amendment.
Yes. Councilmember Hernandez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion to amend, five to zero. Now we'll vote on the original motion.
Before we do that, so staff, if y'all can, present us options. Before we do that, so staff, if y'all can present us options, hopefully by the next meeting, but if you need more time, understandable, uh, to how, how we cover the cost of that through, um, through other means, either the cost or the service of that through other means for us to vote on it in the future.
Okay. Any further discussion on amended motion? I have a motion, a motion on the table.
Councilmember Hernandez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion pass, five to zero, on the original motion.
Okay, good. That tucked away, let's move to item number three, Councilmember Little. You get your equipment all shaped up, huh?
Consideration and possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number one, five, seven, one, so moved.
Have a motion and a second where discussion, staff report.
Thanks, sir. Uh, this is the second reading, there was considerable discussion following up on a couple of prior council meetings on, uh, naming for the reconstructed, uh, Max Road, and council at its last meeting led upon the recommendation that's here, uh, before you tonight, and it also includes a naming of Zlinsky Park, uh, Zlinsky Drive north of our Zlinsky Park.
Okay, we have a staff report, uh, but, uh, council having a question or comment on this item? There being none, we, Madam Secretary, we do have most second on the floor.
Councilmember Little, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion pass, five to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number four, Councilmember Owens.
Consideration and possible action, the first reading of ordinance number 2000M, Nash 185, so moved.
Second.
Staff report.
Thanks, sir. This is a request for rezoning, um, this is a very positive thing, uh, that we shall celebrate, and that's Lonza in our Lower Kirby District is, uh, secured land, and this is giving them, uh, flexibility for future expansions beyond their already substantial investment there on Kirby Drive. So, uh, this gives them the, they, they bought this or optioned this land and, uh, able to develop that in the future.
Counsel, any discussion or response to that item? Staff report. There being none, we have most second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Owens, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little? Motion pass, five to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number five, Councilmember Carrbone.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution R 2019 dash 143, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second where discussion, staff report.
Thanks, Mayor. There was a council discussion about, uh, a request that from time to time, come to the city for connection to our, uh, city-owned utilities, water and sewer service. Uh, part of the law, the quirks that, that seem to be changing constantly is that, um, if the properties are not contiguous, uh, to the city, uh, even if they want to voluntarily annex to us, they're not able to. So, uh, in some cases, they're kind of between a rock and a hard place and not able to annex, and they can't get, uh, the, the utility service. And so council, uh, when we brought the topic up to him, asked us to develop a policy that be applicable and guide property owners when they are in these kinds of situations, and, uh, this is designed to, uh, both provide the option to the property owners and, uh, provide, uh, protection for the city and long-term for utility services. Uh, Mr. Coker and his staff have come up with very, uh, creative and positive, I think, means that, uh, whereby the owners would be obligated under this to, uh, complete some of the preliminary steps for annexation, petition for that, and, uh, we'd, uh, work towards, uh, considering that down the road when they were contiguous and, uh, you know, jump fast forward a little bit, uh, when they could annex and move forward. And there's other provisions in here that, uh, require the property owner to, uh, you know, how they develop the property and, uh, connect in and, uh, provide communication, telecommunications to the city so we can, uh, get the proper meter readings. So, uh, recommend this policy, and then, uh, there, we'll be surprised, there's a specific application that comes at the next meeting for a property that, after this.
Counsel, any comment, response to that, uh, response?
I'd just like to thank staff for working up this with all the options and nuances. I, I think it makes sense, um, if the, the folks outside the city limits want to tie in, I think they're bearing more than the, the fair share of their costs, and, um, therefore none of the burdens going on to the, the residents of the city. Um, so thank you, staff, for working on that.
Couple of questions. On petition for annexation, as part of the development agreement, the annexation will become effective when the property becomes adjacent to the property? Can't be defined as effective, doesn't mean that they have the opportunity, or it is automatic?
Uh, no, that's, uh, where we're actually trying to be as creative as possible in, in light of the new annexation laws, and so what is contemplated, and you'll see with the, with the first application that we'll have at a, at a subsequent meeting, is that the individual makes application, and we're actually going to go ahead, just like we did this evening for the three parcels, we're going to go through the public hearing process and annex those properties, but the effective date of that annexation will not occur until the legal requirement of adjacency and, and continuity occurs, which can occur at some time in the future. So we'll be at a point certain. It's really no different than what you can do with strategic partnership agreements under the Local Government Code, which is also under chapter 43, which essentially you can agree, in that instance, you're doing it with a mud district, uh, but you can actually agree with a mud district, uh, ahead of time, that, hey, on the occurrence of these events, you will be annexed into the city. Uh, but in, in this case, we're actually going to go through that process now, and then upon the occurrence of the event, it will happen by operation of law.
So essentially, if, uh, if they enter in the development agreement with us, uh, the condition is it's effective once it's contiguous, so once we have a section of our city limits that touches theirs, they're automatically annexed.
Yes, and what we will probably do is, we will take, even though that will occur, uh, and that ordinance will become effective at that time, we'll probably have some council action acknowledging that fact as well.
Okay.
And, uh, and just so you know, it's also one of the requirements in the, in the policy, is that the agreement, the development agreement, uh, and the petition, all that will be recorded in the deed records to give any property owners they sell to in the future notice of, uh, the process that's occurred and the annexation ordinance, uh, that will not be effective yet, will also be filed up record.
And we're, we're confident that kind of an agreement can be transferred to the assigns?
The, yes, I, I do, I'm confident that the agreement can be transferred to the signs and, and, uh, require that. So that, that is not a concern for me there.
Just one other quick, uh, small question. So what do we, um, what's the complication associated if we have an area that's served by a CCN, a small area where we've got a privately owned well, and they want to, uh, they want to potentially abandon the well and then extend a line, uh, but they have a CCN? Is that, or does that complicate?
Obviously, we, yes, that would complicate matters. If there's a CCN and somebody wants to receive service from us, we, we are not going to be able to go in and compete with that CCN. And, and just for the record, for individuals, uh, the, it's a certificate of convenience and necessity, and that's what's required in order to be, be able to provide water or sewer service to the area. And so, in, in those instances, uh, what we will need to do is if the person, the holder of the CCN is willing to do so, we can go to the TCEQ and have that, uh, CCN, uh, boundaries modified, uh, accordingly, uh, and you have permission to serve that area. But it would be the, the responsibility, that would be on the, uh, person requesting service to, to go through that process.
Still possible, it's just an added step.
Yes, that's correct.
This is not going to reward people who are, have already told us they don't ever want to have a thing to do with this, ever.
I wouldn't say it's rewarding them, obviously, they would be paying for the service and in, in fact, paying a premium for that service, and so, uh, and that, if they're going to be, and those individuals are...
That's okay.
Are, are likely going to be there in one of our ESD, so they'll also be paying for that service as well. So, uh, yeah, I thi, I think that there's some, uh, any equity issues that were out there before have somewhat been mitigated.
Again, I'd like to thank staff for all the work, I know this complicated.
That's, uh, I hate to reward people who have already said they have made some rather, uh, strange comments there during the process. And I think a lot of our citizens would be a little concerned about that, too.
I think this is a good thing, step in the right direction, trying to hopefully bring some more people in. Um, and earlier we were talking about a reduction in usage, I think, of some of our water as well, so hopefully if we do get some more users paying a higher rate, that would, uh, help to offset some of the losses that we have. I don't know, but, uh, I think this is a, a win for us, so thanks for moving forward with it.
Wait, did you have any comments at this point? Okay. Any other comments from council? Uh, we do have a motion second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Carrbone, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion pass, five to zero.
Moving in our agendas to item number five, item number six, Councilmember Perez, Perez, sorry.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2019 dash 141, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second where discussion?
Thanks, sir. Um, this is for a longstanding CIP project, and that's an extension of a, a trail, uh, the city's going to be reimbursed 80% of the costs. Um, the Thursday packet memo that's included there from May 23 outlines the arduous, uh, journey that this agreement has been on through TechStop. Uh, staff's been working with them as best possible and waiting, uh, to bring this back to you. Uh, so this is not, unfortunately, the award of a contract for any construction, it's just the advanced funding agreement with TechStop that's required to get into place that lays out the reimbursement, and as this outlines, this is, uh, revision to other agreements and the latest, greatest that TechStop has brought down on us, so, uh, that's, uh, so again, this keeps things moving in the positive direction, we'll shortly be able to bring you the actual contracts.
Counsel, any question or comment on this item?
I just got one on the funding agreement. So we haven't selected any firm to come in and do the design yet, right?
Councilmember Owens, uh, that solicitation has gone out, and staff is actually in the process right now of reviewing the firms that have submitted in.
Yeah.
And so we're reviewing those four firms right now, is that correct? Four firms, uh, for their qualifications and ranking them.
Okay, and I see on the budget process here, you're 250,000 for the land. Where, where's that at along that area when you take a look at it? I don't know where we'd be purchasing land at.
Well, we have land across, of course, across there, but also along with that, with the AFAs and with TechStop projects, we're required to own the land and fee, and so we either obtain that land. It's not via easements.
Which areas are...
Oh, you'd be looking north as you go along, uh, north from the, uh, north of Hughes Road. What's that?
Page seven of 28.
Right. North of Hughes Road. Oh, it's not, I'm not going to, not LinkedIn, sir. So be north, north of Hughes Road, I know, uh, we're going to pop the map, put the map up on.
This is going to be a sidewalk, is that correct?
It'd be 10-foot wide, multi-use trail.
Bike, hike?
Correct. We'll have some amenities along the way with, with benches, um, et cetera, similar to what we've, uh, put in previously in our other projects.
So the 850,000 we got in there for design, that's just a, an estimate?
That's correct. That's our construction, that's our estimate right now, uh, while we're negotiating the design portion. It's also including just FYI back there on a pedestrian bridge that will cross over Clear Creek, uh, once it gets to the full width. So that's how that bridge will be set up for the full width based on the Clear Creek project. So you can see from here, it's the purple in your package.
Mm-hmm.
And any land that, uh, needs to be acquired along the, uh, east side or north side of the, uh, Clear Creek, uh, up across and then, uh, heading back down after it gets underneath Pearland Parkway, and then down towards, uh, the university.
Okay. So the four firms that you get shortlisted, y'all having discussions about, do they know what the estimate of, uh, the design fee is?
Since it is in our budget, it is a public document, and so if they are looking at our five-year CIP, the estimated amounts are in that budget.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, just to clarify, we're spending 9.2 million on a, as Councilman Little said, a sidewalk. Um, I, I struggle with it. I mean, the only saving grace is the state's paying for 80% of it, so the, our local shares 1.6 million, that still seems steep to me. Um, I get there's a bridge and, I, I don't know, I, I, yeah, we're paying $9 million for a big sidewalk, and we're paying almost $1 million for somebody to design the sidewalk for us. Um, I, I start, I know people want it, and we're getting 80%, so that's why I've supported it in the past, but at some point, even if, if the state or the feds are going to give us 90% on some of this crazy stuff, at, at some point, does it really make sense to keep chasing, chasing these, these projects? I mean, it's, it's still not a no-brainer at 1.6 million for a sidewalk as a trail for me, so I mean, at some point, I don't know, that's for future discussions, but, yeah, this is a nine, $9 million sidewalk. And it'd be interesting to see future usage and how much, you know, for pedestrian this sidewalk's going to cost.
You know, if the state pays 1 point, or 9.1, when you look at the total value, we still got 1.5 million as contingency. If we don't spend that, then we're, we're in pretty good shape, so. At least while we got less than 100,000 that we'd have to pay out, if we went in an advanced agreement for 9.1.
Any other comment or question? I think we have motion second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Perez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrbone?
Aye.
Motion pass, five to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number seven, Councilmember Hernandez.
This is, uh, council input discussion regarding referral to planning and zoning committee for possible regulations in the Unified Development Code.
Your staff report?
So, um, this is something that council had requested be brought up, we had talked about this, uh, about a year ago, and I'll ask Mr. McDonald to just sort of frame it with some, some of the background that we provided and, uh, some of the ways council might choose to go and what would happen next, so.
Uh, thank you, sir. Um, it's come up through various presentations with regard to zoning requests or CUPs, uh, the possibility of overflow or spillage of light from commercial areas into residential. Our UDC is not very specific or strong in that area, basically says that light from commercial areas cannot spill in the neighboring areas or onto the street, uh, but doesn't really give any further guidelines. And so this was an item that was requested, uh, to be brought up for discussion. Uh, we've included a previous, uh, material that was presented for a discussion that was held a couple of years ago. For the most part, it's, it's pretty much the same. Um, what we've kind of recommended is that, um, include some regulations for light shields as well as limiting the height of poles. as limiting the height of poles. We think the combination of that with the distance requirement, right now we do require 25 to a 30-foot setback of commercial development from residential areas as well as trees screening, that the combination of those will get the effect we need through site design and not get into regulation of lumens or foot candles, et cetera, which make it more difficult, I think, to enforce.
In our development of subdivisions, maybe shopping centers, we have a requirement for down-looking lighting. Is that...
Yes, sir. It basically says...
Is that covered under this, but needs to be enhanced to prevent across-the-street lighting? Is that what you're doing?
What we're proposing is to tweak that, that beyond just prohibiting light spillage into neighboring properties, that we put in some specific guidelines to help limit that through design.
We got a pending about every once every three, four months, there's a, I think some organization has a ball field across the street from this person's house, and they say they leave the light on all night, and also it shines in his garage into his house. If that were down-looking lighting, it wouldn't be doing that, so.
Correct. The sports fields are a little different because they are designed to light a brighter over a larger area. And so that's more of a working with the sports groups to remember to turn those off. Speaking with code enforcement, they don't see a lot of complaints in this area, and the ones they do get, they have been able to work with the commercial neighbors to adjust their lights, but I think there are some good basic requirements that we can include in a future UDC amendment that would help assist the issue and make the problem less prevalent.
There's some areas where you want the lighting to come out, straight out, like street lighting if you're subdivision. I sure like for them to have a broader base illuminating area, but this is a different situation, I think, is what you're talking about here.
Yes, sir. This is primarily from parking lot lights in commercial areas, or occasionally there'll be security lighting on the back of buildings. And so just as a second layer of regulation to ensure that that light does not spill into possible neighbor, specifically residential areas, we would, we would ask for some guidance. If this is the way you'd like to move forward, then we will work with P&amp;Z to bring forward a recommendation.
This eliminates that sort of problem.
I think it would severely help the, help the situation, sir.
Okay. I keep being asked about that quite frequently.
So there's nothing, this does not have anything to do with the street lighting, right?
No, this is specifically light from private properties, commercial properties mostly with regard to their adjacency to residential properties.
So it would keep the heights as the same as they are right now, whatever commercials add to it?
Well, we would, right now, we don't limit the height necessarily of the poles, except by overall construction. We would, we would probably set a lower standard, which might occasionally require additional ones based on their coverage requirements, but it would allow us to kind of solve the problem without having to go back out there and send code officers in the evening with light meters that don't really work, that have issues with enforcement. And so instead of trying to solve it after the fact, we would just require design to try to limit the issue.
So the, actually, you'd have a lot of restrictions on there with the cover on there of the ambient light going out in the different areas, but one of the concerns I've heard that sometimes the commercial property, say like grocery stores and stuff like that, you know, HEB, that the lighting in the evening is not really strong enough to have, you know, the lighting cover all the parking area out there, and there's concerns about people going shopping, coming out there at night when, you know, to get in their vehicle, when they don't think there's enough light. Is there anything we can do on that?
We could, we could look at distance requirements and say maybe those light poles within a certain 50 feet or so of residential properties could be lower. For example, the HEB at Pearland Parkway, obviously the building is between the parking lot and the residential neighborhood behind it, so there's not an issue really with those lights, but potentially they could have security lights in the back that we could address through this. So we could look at like a sliding scale that would look at proximity of light poles to residential neighborhoods.
I think, you know, I want to see here that this is a good step forward because I guess the last one was what, 2006, I guess it was, when it was actually done, and every time they come through here, one of the questions on any new development, you know, is how the lighting and the biggest part that you hear, you know, from residential, there is a light spewing over into the residential area. So that's what we're trying to be able to come through and make whatever changes necessary in order not to do that.
Sure.
If we approve this, would you be cruising to find where there's violation and alert them to the new council decision if that decision is made?
Well, this would only affect new construction, so we would continue to work with code enforcement department if their, if issues with older development came forward, but we would only be able to apply these rules to new development.
Okay. Staff, have any further comments?
I had a question. Would this affect anything that's added after the fact, though, too? I mean, like the...
Yes, if you came in and say expanded your parking lot and you wanted to add light, new rules would apply, or if you added a new light behind it, but anything on the ground as of the date of the...
I'm talking even like plug-in type lights, because I've seen some of these businesses in their, their doorways, they have these LED strips that are so bright, and I've heard mixed feedback on whether or not that's currently allowed.
The Planning and Zoning Commission is currently reviewing some proposed amendments to UDC, and I believe those LED strips have been part of that discussion, but that's not part of what this discussion is.
Okay. And then the other thing, and this kind of sparked a memory of mine that I remember from maybe about a year ago, I had an elderly friend of mine tell me that, and I just looked it up because I couldn't remember which one it was, but the lighted digital marquee in front of the Central Church of Christ next to the Shell right off O'Day, that sometimes that thing comes on, and I've actually witnessed this as well, sometimes that it changes to a white background that is such a strong glare. I mean, you can't, at nighttime, it's impossible to adjust to it and see beyond it. Just from a safety perspective, would that address any, if we start putting more digital signage up and down the road, and all of a sudden you've got lights of different colors coming on and off, things like that, would any of that kind of be covered under something like this?
Well, that would be under the sign ordinance. The sign ordinance covers the use of digital signs, but we can look at that and see the regulations currently, if we feel they're enough, strong enough to, there are some cities who require digital signs that go dimmer in the evening, obviously because it's darker, you don't need to be as bright. So we could look at some options on the ways to maybe solve those problems.
Okay. Thank you.
Good, super. Any other question or comment?
Yeah, Mayor. Yes, Mayor. I am, I was the one that brought this up with the help of Member Owens. Something that's come up continuously over the last couple of years. I do think we owe the citizens trying to move forward on this because it's a complaint we get a lot. You know, my proposal would be limit the height of the bill, limit the height of the lights, the height of the building, require photometric plan with every set of new development, and not allow more than a foot candle at the property line. I think that would be, that would help to address this issue. I think in that, we need to have, very similar where we have other compliance triggers, we need to have a compliance trigger for this for anybody who's doing a significant remodel of their facility. At what point is this triggered? With this, my suggestion would be triggered with all other UDC requirements, wherever we end up setting that trigger with the future UDC amendments that was part of the committee discussion. But if we have an opportunity to take an existing facility that's got blaring lights that go in the back of subdivision, they do a significant remodel. If we can go in there and say, look, with the significant remodel, we want to go ahead and ask you to reduce these lights or cover them or, you know, make them in compliance. I do agree with Member Hernandez, kind of stole my thunder. I think in this, we need to, we need to either eliminate or minimize or reduce the intensity of any strip lighting. From my opinion, we just eliminate it, any strip lighting that lines a window for a retail center. There's no need to have it that bright in the evening, you know, and we have a lot of them that flash different colors or flash, flash in the evening. I'll be honest with you, when it's late at night, it's pretty distracting. Not only is it annoying, it's distracting. I wouldn't say so far as it's hazardous, but it's, it is distracting, and it doesn't give the city the character that I think we're trying to achieve with the Unified Development Code. And then, you know, tagging on something, either reviewing side ordinance to find out what's, what's in there with respect to intensity after dusk, I think would be another thing that we could, we could discuss along with this. Those are my thoughts.
Obviously, I do believe that we do prohibit the LED strip lights, but what we'll do is we'll work with code enforcement, maybe set up an evening that we can do a drive-through with some zoning staff and with code enforcement and kind of see what's out there and maybe where some enforcement needs to take place.
I think it's wise to get out in front of this issue, so it's great. Well, the comment from council?
That's it.
Other questions, comments? Madam Secretary, I believe we have motion second on the floor.
No, it's a discussion item, Mayor. We don't have, we don't have a motion. This is a discussion item. No motions on the floor.
He's willing to do it, let's grab him.
So I think, it sounds like there's a consensus, and, you know, with those parameters, Mr. McDonald and his team will take something back to the P&amp;Z and have them conduct the required public hearings and discussions and bring you back a recommendation.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to item 13, mayor council, issues for council discussion, none. At this point, I'd like to have a moment of personal privilege and occasion.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my last meeting, so the mayor asked, or if I wanted to make a few comments, and y'all know I love to speak. I've really enjoyed it, and thank you to all the staff. You know, budget time's fine, but I just kind of reflecting back on things and over the past six years, getting, getting the call from Clay with Indy. You know, going through the hurricane, it's, I mean, I know fire department and PD are out there every day, but seeing how public works and everybody kind of came together in the back of a dump truck, even seeing, you know, HR and finance up at the EOC getting things done. I don't know, that's, those are some of the moments that really stick out to both me and my family. You know, I look back and the last six years, I've lost my dad, and then I've gained three beautiful baby girls, and that's, it's been a crazy life change. And yeah, I mean, I love Pearland. Everybody asks me what's next, and I love Pearland, and I want to continue to make it a great place for my girls, for us to raise my girls, and, and continue on. I think we've done some good work over the past six years. I've enjoyed working with most of you, and, no, it's, we don't always agree up here, but I think we can hash it out pretty good, and I'll, I'll be watching from the house, and I'll be harassing y'all, so don't, don't screw up. And again, thank you to staff for putting up with me for the past six years, and it's been, been fun, and that's, that's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
You know, Tony, when you speak, I always listen because there's words of wisdom that you have shared with us, and I appreciate that. And although I can't hear it too well, because you don't talk into the mic very well, but that's a...
I'll work on that, Mayor.
Well, you, you and the, yeah, our other guy at the other end of the table doesn't talk into the mic either, so I'm determined, next month, the rest of this month, the next month, I'm going to check, make sure my ears are okay, so I'll make sure that it's not me and not you. But you have done a superb job. You've given your things from a standpoint of what's best for the city, which is what a councilman should always do, and I think it's, you shared with us the words we need to hear. Sometimes we don't want to agree with you, but that's what a councilman's supposed to do, to listen and maybe agree, maybe, maybe share some other ideas, so. But you've done a superb job over the years, and I appreciate you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Tony, I don't know those from appreciation or sense of so long, good to know you. But moving in our agenda to executive session, under Texas Government Code, Section 551.07, law for consultation with city attorney regarding confidential legal matters, contact negotiations, and subject to the attorney's counsel. And it will be a closed executive session, and we will bring back, obviously, and we would have individuals in the council, in our staff, that will attend as necessary, and we are, cannot make a decision in the executive session, but any decision that we will make by as a council will be brought back to open session for handling, and at this time, we will recess into executive session at 9:04.
I'm sorry, I can't assist with that request.
But if you provide the audio content, I'd be happy to help you with that.
If you have any questions or need further information, please let me know.
Thanks for your time.
The Council has returned executive session at, uh... nine, looks like it's 9:50. Uh...after reviewing the issue, the Council will take no action on any of the discussion in executive session. Moving to other business, we have none. And let me turn, let me terminate the executive session at, uh, 9:57. Other business, none adjournment?
Yes, we adjourned at 9:58.